Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is the East Aurora Union Free School District Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, August 22nd, 2023. Please join me in the pledge. I have a motion to enter executive session to discuss matters related to four particular students, matters related to three particular employees, matters relating to FAP 22, and contract negotiations for four particular employees. Move by Mrs. Daniel. Second by Mr. Blowers. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are now carried seven zero. Okay, thank you, everyone. We are returning from executive session where we discussed matters related to four particular students, matters related to three particular employees, matters relating to FAP 22, and contract negotiations for one particular employee. Moving on to item three, agenda changes. Do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item four. Items requiring board action. A. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Kieran Smith to a probationary 1.0 FTE in the tenure area of education of children with handicapped and disabilities as detailed in your agenda. I have a motion. Move by Mrs. Oweiler. Second by Mr. Blowers. Discussion.
There she is. Stand up.
Hi, I'm Kieran Smith, and I'm really excited for this opportunity.
Thank you for being here. Hello.
Thank you.
Vote before you cut.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried seven zero. Welcome. Item B. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Sean Weatherby, your probationary 1.0 FTE position in the tenure area of education of children with handicapped and disabilities, as detailed in your agenda. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Move by Mrs. Oweiler.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cassidy. Mr. Weatherby.
Yes, hello. Sean Weatherby. Glad to be here and appreciative for the opportunity.
Hello, thank you for being here. Welcome. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Carried seven zero. Welcome. Item C. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the appointment of Merle White Renee Lanswitz. To probationary 1.0 position in the tenure area of education of children with handicapped and conditions, as detailed in your agenda. I have a motion. Move by Mrs. Oweiler.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blowers.
Hi, I'm Renee Lanswitz. Thrilled to be part of the team.
Welcome. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried seven zero. Congratulations. Item D. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the appointment of Jamie Glendinge to- Probationary 1.0 FTE position in the tenure area of teachers of English's- teachers- teacher of English to speakers of other languages. Words. As detailed in your agenda.
So moved.
Move by Mr. Cassidy. Second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Daniel.
Hi, Jamie. Excited to be here.
Hi, welcome. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Carried seven zero. Congratulations. Item E. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the appointment of Avette Galley to a 1.6 FTE position in the tenure area of teacher of English to speakers of other languages, as detailed in your agenda. I have a motion.
So moved.
Move by Mr. Blowers.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Daniel. Not here tonight, and we congratulate and welcome Ms. Galley after we vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Carried seven zero. Item F. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the appointment of Kylie Moeke to a probationary 1.0 FTE position in the area of elementary education, as detailed in your agenda. I have a motion.
So moved.
Move by Mr. Cassidy. Second. Second by Mrs. Daniel. Discussion.
Hi, I'm really excited to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried seven zero. Welcome. Item G. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Lindsay Camp to a probationary 1.0 FTE position in the tenure area of English, as detailed in your agenda. I have a motion.
So moved.
Move by Mrs. Oweiler.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blowers.
Hi, I'm Lindsay. Thrilled to be here.
Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried seven zero. Welcome. Now, item H. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Wellington Melanie Warmingham to a probationary 1.0 FTE occupational therapy assistant position, as detailed in your agenda.
So moved.
Move by Mr. Cassidy. Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brunson.
Hi, I'm Melanie. Thrilled to be here and excited to join the team. Thanks.
May I- yes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Carried seven zero. Congratulations. Item I. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the appointment of Jenna Horwitz to a probationary 1.0 position in occupational therapy assistant, as detailed in your agenda. Second? Second. Second by Mrs. Oweiler.
Hi, I'm Jenna. Very excited to start here.
Hello, welcome. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried seven zero. Congratulations. Item J. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the appointment of Jeremy Fornito to probationary 1.0 position in occupational ther- as occupational therapy assistant, as detailed in your agenda. I have a motion.
So moved.
Move by Mr. Blowers. Second by Mrs. Daniel.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jeremy. Thankful for the opportunity and excited to get to work.
Thank you very much, and hello. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried seven zero. I'm welcome. All right, I figured out what true we- it seemed like we were only going to vote for you if you said hello nicely.
And also welcome to Lisa DeFrancisco.
Yes, hi. I'm the occupational therapist.
We appointed you at a different meeting, so congratulations and welcome in person. And Shelby Sealy.
Hi, thank you for letting me continue my teaching career.
Thank you for being here. Congratulations to all of you. Moving on to item five for reports on discussion items. A. Capital facilities project.
Uh, yes, so, um, I asked Steve and Joe's here as well, appreciate that, to come in today to give us an update because the last time we know, we talked about the introduction here at, at, at the middle school in regard to some of our, our pipes down in the basement. And so he's going to talk a little bit about that and kind of just give us an update on our last meeting and where we are in the project and how things are moving along. So, guys, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. Good to be back again. I think tonight we have a little bit better news than we've been, than we shared last time. Happy to have Joe Armani from Buffalo Construction with us tonight. I think most of you have met Joe before, but he'll be speaking a little bit of some of the budget items later on in, in what we're going to talk about here. So just really two major focal points. I'm going to hit on the drainage item first and then talk about the overall project, where we're at right now and the capital project in general. So as you'll remember from the last meeting, we'd been doing investigations over the last six months or a little bit longer than that into some drainage issues and some flooding in the basement here at the middle school. Had that scoped out and determined that there were some major issues with the whole infrastructure setup down to the structure and drainage system out in the parking lot behind the building. Following, you know, really over the last three weeks, we've proceeded with communications with the state education department as well as the local village and our engineering teams and some contractors in the area for various research to figure out the best plan of attack. And, and we think we have a, a good plan now in place to rectify the issues with drainage. At the time, last, last meeting, we talked about this as an emergency project. What I want to identify there is that SED classifies certain things as an emergency based off of immediate threats to life safety or well-being or the condition of your buildings. While the flooding and the drainage issues are an immediate issue, there's a gray area there about what is actually qualified as an emergency. Furthermore, the state aids those projects in a different manner, and what we had hoped to be the case was we were going to be able to use some of the capital project funding to offset that emergency project work. The catch there is if you classify it as an emergency project, you can't use the capital project funds to do the work. So you'd have to use local district budgetary funds, general funds, and then there's no guarantee that the state would actually aid that work in a reasonable period. They would aid it, but it might be spread out over 15 years. So we wouldn't want the district to be out $200,000, $300,000, $500,000 of general fund money and not get it back for 15 full years. So after consultation with the district's legal counsel and advisors and looking at where we were with the project and the status, we decided to ask the state education department for just an expedited review. Not classify it as a full emergency, but move the project to the front of the line. We need this done, but it doesn't help the district at all if it's classified as an emergency. Good news this week, last week we didn't have this info to share, but this week they did confirm that they would consider it once we send it into them, which in the past I've found that that means yes. Once you confirm that they've received all the paperwork, they'll take a look at it right away or within a week. So that's a, a very positive turn on it. What that leads us to is being able to then use the capital project funds to offset the cost for this work. So before I get into the finances a little bit, I just want to rough out what the plan of attack is currently. Everything's here, still is a little bit fluid. The engineering teams are working through the finer details, but what we're looking to do is rework all the lines in the basement, intercept it at a higher elevation and have the lines discharged from the building, avoiding the existing structure behind the, behind the building right now and just abandoning it in place, running to a new structure out in the parking lot and then making a sharp left going into the grass area, minimizing the impact to the asphalt, minimizing the impacts to bus drop off, parent drop off, everything else while construction takes place, and then tie in to an existing structure that's out in the grass area. Couple benefits of that. That avoids the need to tie into the village municipal system. There already are connections to the system, so we're not making a new tap per se, and we're saving the money of cutting across the parking lot extensively and, and maybe making the work a little bit more feasible in a, in a shorter time period. That is the plan currently. There are always curveballs that might come up that might adjust that slightly, but this is the direction that our team right now feels is the best pathway to move forward. So in terms of the plan, we're obviously going to continue to work with the school district and Brian and the facilities team have identified, you know, they're constantly monitoring that pump and the water levels. After, you know, heavy rains, the, the existing structure does get pumped out so that there's no real concerns of flooding immediately. And the long-term, I guess it's not really that long-term, uh, plan would be to get the project into SED as soon as this week. There's some paperwork that does need to be signed and final pieces put together, and then request that expedited review. And as soon as SED would grant approval, we would put the project out to bid and get contractors to do the work with the hope that this is done before inclement weather this, this fall, you know, before it freezes and causes issues. That's obviously the plan. Best laid plan sometimes still goes sideways, but that's what we're going to target and that's what we're going to work towards. I would start with one bit of good news, that last time I think we had shocked the group maybe a little bit with the number of $500,000 to $1 million of construction, based off of what we now know it's looking to be less than that, $250,000 to $500,000 range. So significantly less impact, although still impactful to the overall plan moving forward. However, with that, I want to get into an update for the general project at this point. We've updated the schedule. It's a little bit more complicated now than it was six months ago. We've gone from two phases to four. The first phase, the doors phase at the high school, we're still waiting on quotes. We actually have a quote now, so hopefully we'll have a contract to the Board of Education at your next meeting to approve and move forward with the door placement at the high school. But we have added in the doors or the basement drainage phase to that as sort of a side part and piece, all under the same umbrella of the general capital project. So a reminder on phase one, just as a, you know, this doors phase, sorry, reminder on the doors phase here, that is those two doors at the high school, the two sets of doors. We did submit that to the state in January. We did not get approval until late June and then have been spending the last two months getting contractors to quote the work. One contractor promised they would do the work and get this, get us a number, only to wait two weeks to say, no, I, sorry, we can't do that. So we're on our third different contractor attempting to procure quotes for that at this point. We do have the number from them. It's just a process of vetting that number to make sure it's fair and getting the contracts coordinated. Phase one is a lot of life safety items. So as a reminder to the group, that was really what was prioritized, what we felt, what the administration felt, and I believe what everyone here felt was the most important stuff to do. Fire alarms, clocks and PA systems, security cameras, addressing all the buildings in the district, addressing the elevator, addressing the roofs here that are outside of warranty and getting those replaced, and then as well as some facilities and, and nicer upgrades, toilet rooms, nicer upgrades, renovating the toilet rooms here at the building and renovating several rooms, 101 through 105, some classrooms and office space on the first floor. We did show these images last time we were, or two, two meetings ago when we were here, just as a reminder, general scheme of what the bathrooms are going to look like when they're done, full complete facelifts, and the classroom layouts, all new millwork, new walls, new mechanical systems, lights, floors, ceilings, going to be a nice little transition for a few spaces in the building. However, we did get to a good point here. BCC has the project and has started scoping it and has pulled together an estimate for us at this point. We want to hit on cost and construction.
Absolutely. So, thanks, Steve. So first, an introduction. I don't know all the phases here. I've gone through some of the OECD meetings, so I know some of the folks. Joe Armani, I'm a project director. I'll be taking the lead on the project moving forward here. I know you guys are used to seeing Steve Deckard at most of these, or for a long time he's been around, so I'm going to start taking over some of these duties for him. So yeah, so Steve mentioned, we did our estimate. We actually did an SED submission estimate, which is the latest and greatest drawings that are currently into the state. It, it offered us an opportunity to, to save about a half a million dollars. So the confidence that we have obviously in this emergency project, so-called emergency project, to kind of fit this into capital project is, is, you know, we think it's feasible, right? And I think obviously as we get into the bidding phases, we'll obviously talk about strategic alternates and anything else that we need to do with this to see what makes sense for the district. But right now, I think, you know, the plan moving forward is to, if everything goes forward this evening, to, to go forward with this project. So glad to be a part of the team. I'll be seeing a lot more of you folks in the next couple of years, obviously, and, you know, looking forward to another successful project here. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, when these meetings go on and we're into construction, he'll do most of the talking and I'm just going to sit in the background.
He's got the lead right now. It's good.
Just to give everyone a brief update on phase two as well, overall project, the first phase is into the state education department. The second phase, we're getting into the meat of design here. We've spent a good time, amount of time this summer starting to do research, getting into the spaces. We'll actually be out in the buildings again next week to do more field verifications before kids are back in the building. It's a lot easier for us to do that when there's no one here. The main highlights of the second phase are the renovations to this space, the family and consumer sciences room here, hallway renovations, heating and cooling system upgrades, and then the extensive site work at the high school. One of the things I wanted to share tonight with the group is our progress on the high school designs. So moving from where we were pre-referendum with some initial concepts to this current proposed layout, which has been presented and reviewed by Brian and the athletic department, you know, we got great feedback from the coaches and from the staff early in the summer on what were the priorities and, and what really needed to happen. So what we've laid out and done here is we've, it's offset the two fields. They were originally lined up next to each other, but we've offset the two fields using a control point of the cross-country course as a main driver of where the tennis courts had to be, the bathroom, so that it wouldn't get in the way of the start-finish line and especially the start line as the, the athletes are all narrowing down. Tennis courts are oriented true north-south, all in a grouping of the six courts together, which was the most preferred option for the coaches so that they could keep tabs on all the different matches at the same time. We've, are designing and including a retention system for water, which would have to be stored one way or another. We're working on a solution to have it be a feature piece, an actual surface retention system so that there'd actually be some water permanently on site. Details of that not yet fully designed, but we feel that that could be something that really enhances the aesthetic of the property, a place for gathering and, and athletes, families to gather and sit under trees or benches around something like a water feature. It would be a nice, a nice bonus to, to the property. But this is sort of the, the current layout. Our team is going to be moving forward with this layout design, getting into the details of the grading, the structures, the systems, the lighting, power systems, features on the site, fencing, trees, plantings, areas for people to gather, paving and things like that, and then come back to the departments again with those updated designs throughout the fall so that we can hit our timeline of a submission to the state in 2024. Next steps here at this point, really just as a, as a summary, the first thing we're doing, really bullet points one and two are both simultaneous, getting that drainage project into the state as well as getting the contract figured out and awarded for the doors project for high school. Get those two items kind of behind us. As we're waiting for phase one, we'll continue to work on the phase two designs, but as soon as phase one gets SED approval, we'll target getting that out on the street for bid so that that can be awarded hopefully before Christmas and, you know, be in a real good spot for the holiday season and getting into next year. And then next year we'll be submitting phase two and starting to get into construction and actually seeing the, the heavy work happening around the buildings. So I'm sure there might be some questions about any of the things that I brought up, so.
You mentioned the, the second drainage issue at the cafeteria. Could you tell them about that?
Yes, absolutely. Um, do I have, I'll bring back up the plan because that might be the best way to, to demonstrate it. So when we assisted the district with getting a contractor onsite to scope the lines, there were two areas of concern. The major area and primary area was underneath the basement and, in the building, and that's what this primary thing has been focused on addressing. The secondary issue was some water infiltration and issues behind the cafeteria. When the contractors were out, they actually had to get them to come out several times to, to get the scoping fully done. They were able to snake and camera that line. If the line leaves the building, it's actually painted on the side of the building. If you leave out that way, now you can see the spray paint on the grass of where the line actually goes. It does tie into a storm structure on North Grove Street. That line is pretty badly infested with roots and will need to be cleaned or addressed at some point. It's not as pressing of, of an emergency by any stretch of the means in, in my mind as the issue that we're dealing with in the back of the site, but that is something else that we're going to be addressing and try to incorporate into one of the upcoming projects. It's a smaller piece, but it's an area that does need to be addressed to keep that water out of the building.
Water coming into the building?
It's coming, it's bubbling back up from the, the pipe below. Some of the floor tiles get wet.
Oh, inside?
Inside, yeah.
In the cafeteria?
To the side of, it's the mailroom, I think, actually, right? It's the mailroom over there. The line goes under the ground. It's right where the edge of the cafeteria and the addition of that hallway run on the side of the building. So you have the addition where the, the, the greeters desk is and the hallway with the ramp that leads to the back parking lot. The line runs from the old building underneath that addition and out, and the water backs up and the floor gets wet in the mailroom. Heavy rains, right, Brian? So not, not all the time, but.
Comes up a floor drain?
It, it seeps up through the floor, so the-
Through the concrete floor.
There's likely a crack in that line.
Yeah.
Right at the bottom there. But if the water's not draining, because it hits roots as soon as it gets out, outside of the building.
There's no basement there.
Yeah. Add it to the list.
Yeah, I do.
Well, that's a, that's a big improvement over the previous design because it, it utilizes this line that goes out to Fillmore, which is a newer drain line that was put in when renovating the swimming pool a few years ago. So, so it just makes all the sense in the world. You'll probably have, have to deal with some disruption of the drainage for the, the, the grass field there in the process, but it's much better than tearing up the parking lot.
Mr. Blowers?
The slide where you mentioned the, um, budget, the budget about $500,000. That was based on estimate for 60% of the project, is that?
And 60% and SED.
So that's the, that is what is currently in the state, which would be the contractor.
Current bidding environment, everything would show that. I mean, that's how you come up with that.
This is, this is the latest and greatest estimate that we put.
That's encouraging.
Yeah, very, it's very good. It seems like things are going in that trajectory.
I would say that part of the reason for that, it's, it's a small part, but it's a part that the, one of the scope items that was in the project, a portion of the work in a couple of the rooms on the first floor here was handled internally. So that had been done somewhere in the line between the inception of the project scope and, and how we got to this point. So there was some money allocated there that didn't need to be spent.
And we showed that increase in savings between the 60% and the SED submission.
Yeah.
Okay, so the plan, if anything worked out the way you presented, the, the water issue will be taken care of. The $500,000 to be eating.
Without any change.
Tell we're working with a tight budget at that point, especially on that last 40% then?
No, I, I, so this is, this, that, that $500,000 is limited to sort of the phase one scope, right? So it's just the work that's been designed to date is projecting to be about $500,000 under budget. So-
Just for phase one?
Just for phase one.
You said 60%. You were doing 60% of the entire 23.
No, just so, so there's still all of phase two that has to be designed yet and finished up, but.
As a part of that.
Thank you.
I just, I just want to thank Brian and his crew and, and Steve and Joe for working through this process and finding the solution. So they, they were, they examined all the pipes very, very carefully and, and they came up with a solution that is far less impactful because we have to cut through that parking lot right now. It would be a mess in terms of bringing kids back to school, buses, places for our, our staff to park. So this solution is far less expensive and far more efficient and effective, and they really worked hard to figure it out, to make, to make a better decision for us, and this is about as good as it can be. And the idea that we don't have to tap into the main water system, sewer system is another big issue for us, and so this, this is really a very positive solution with a lot of hard work that needed to be done.
That's great. It's very good news. Mrs. Daniel? I was just going to ask if this is going to be posted on the website so that people can see, you know, the more updated information. I think that's a nice thing if we continue to do that, so.
I also- I think collectively too, we're going to work on a logistics plan on how this is going to look and map it out, of course, with the folks from the school to figure out what that impact is, so then we can communicate that to the community as well.
And the hope is that this, this work here will just take two weeks.
Ideally.
If everything along-
Not from contract to done, but when the guys show up onsite to be actual construction.
Hopefully it's two weeks, so then it'll be two weeks of having to shift the buses and things around in the parking lots.
Well, they won't have to do that because the pipe goes the other way. So the buses can continue just the way they always have.
There's that corner right there.
Yeah, just, just a matter of-
See that blue dot? And that's like closer to STF right there. That, that's-
Oh, you're saying that one little spot there.
This is also the loading dock.
I know that.
So that would be impactful for some-
I know you have to dig into the pavement, the loading dock, but the, but I don't see what you're saying. In other words, the buses can't make that turn with that big blue dot there.
Yeah.
Got you. Got you, got you, got you. You're right. Two weeks, no buses.
So the other piece of good news, that we've had two capital facilities meetings since our last board meeting, was that all of the appliances at the, in the new fax room are now going to be adable. So that's another, that'll be another huge piece of savings for us as well. Other questions or comments? Thank you very much for being here. Thank you for good news. I know you don't always get to control that, but we're, we're happy to hear it.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to item B. I'm sure Dan Brunson requests update.
Yeah, well, there you go.
Uh, Dan, Dan, just, uh-
I always like it when my name is in print. Proves I'm still alive.
Dan, Dan just asked if we could have just enough summer activities, so I asked Justin Cindy to kind of just, just tell you a little bit about like summer school and- and all the PD that's been going on, and, yeah, go ahead, take it.
I'm going to go first. I usually do like a summer curriculum update in September, which I'll still do, because those are more hours that are specifically requested by teachers, but there has been some organized activities that we've had ever since school let out in June, actually. So I'll run through those quickly. Back in late June, the last week of June, Cindy ran another co-teaching training. It was a little different than the last one, so if they did attend the one during the school year, they could still attend this one, and we had 22 gen ed and special ed teachers attend that. Lisa Brown ran some Tech Tuesdays here at the middle school from July 11th through August 15th. She had two sessions a day for two hours each, each session, and we had about five or 10 teachers attend each of those during the summer. We sent three high school teachers to week-long AP trainings out of state in July and August. We sent two of our high school science teachers to an edible science class at Cornell in preparation for the new sustainable agriculture class coming up in September. Last week, we had another restorative practices implementation team training, and we had about 15 new teachers that are wanting to join each of the building teams, attend those four days last week, and then on that fourth day, the previous team members of each of the buildings, they all recommitted for another year. They attended that fourth day, so they could all plan for the upcoming school year and come up with action plans. We had three special ed teachers attend a two-day workshop at Summit on considerations and strategies for fostering students' academic and behavioral success. We had about four of our UPK teachers attended a pre-K educator summit. It's a one day during the summer. Next Monday and Tuesday, we have, last summer, we offered days one and two of Kagan Cooperative Learning Training, and next Monday and Tuesday are the follow-up, days three and four, and we have 37 teachers signed up to attend that next Monday and Tuesday. Yesterday, our fourth grade, our, our whole fourth grade team came in. They've been working with a consultant on revamping the intervention time at Parkdale. They're going to call it win time now, but they've been working with her all last year, and they're kicking off the school year by meeting with her yesterday to come up with some action plans. And then I will send the invitations to the board tomorrow, but next week, we have another busy week. We have new teammate orientation day on Tuesday, new teacher orientation day on Wednesday, new teacher aid orientation day on Thursday, and then opening day on Friday. So I'll send all that information to you, and you're welcome to come to whatever parts fit your schedule or whatever interests you. You can just let me know or just pop in.
Lance, what on three AP classes?
AP pre-calculus is brand new, offered by the college board this year, so we're going to run that, and we have two sections of that. Enough students signed up to fill two sections. AP economics, the teacher that's going to teach next year was not trained. And then AP research, same, same thing. We had a retirement in the English department, so another English teacher's going to take on that AP course, and she needed to go to the training also.
Thank you.
Yep.
Those are the three that were the week-long ones out of state?
Yep. Yeah. They used to offer them right in West Anika at everyone Bosse's, but they don't do that anymore. So yes.
Updates.
Yep.
So if you drove by Parkdale, like Dan had mentioned in his email, it was a very busy place this summer. We had our summer school for our students with disabilities that was running this summer. We didn't do our summer camp this year. We just did our traditional summer school that we've done in the past. So we had what we call our SERES program, which ran Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and SERES stands for specialized instruction and related services. So Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 8:30 until 11:30, we had students taking part in a half-day of math instruction, a half-day of English instruction, and then they were also getting speech or OT or PT services if they qualified for those over the summer. And I see they were spending half of the day in ELA and half of the day in math, but we tried to make summer a fun time, so they were learning a lot, but not knowing they were learning a lot, because we incorporated a lot of play and fun activities into it. And then this was the first year that we ran Monday through Friday, our pre-K special ed program. So that was a Monday through Friday program for six weeks, and that also ran 8:30 till 11:30. So some of our students that were in our new integrated preschool class this year were actually in our summer program, so they were able to continue their learning throughout the summer and getting them more prepared for kindergarten. So those are the two programs that we ran, but we also rented space to Bosse's, so Bosse's had their traditional ESY programs running the same time that our programs were running. So that's why Parkdale looked like a very busy place and it was.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dan, for the question, and thank you for the updates. Item six, superintendent's comments.
Yeah, I have, I have a couple. Just, I wanted to bring up, we had, we had like a, just a conversation around the concept of offering pre, pre-K through school districts. I mentioned that one of my colleagues brought it up to the group, you know, to Bosse's in regard to offering K through the school district, and.
Daycare.
Daycare, what did I say? Excuse me. Daycare, thank you. Yeah, so daycare through the school district. We talked about like the idea of supporting it through NISBA, and, oh, we had kind of a, like a superficial conversation about it. We just kind of bounced around a little bit. There were some concerns, I think, about like the need to do it. It's absolutely not necessary that we offer daycare, but in like what they say is, is daycare deserts, and primarily in the southern tier, we don't really deal with that. So daycare's not always easy to find in our area. I mean, people do struggle, and they, you get on the list early to make it happen, but most people are able to find daycare in, in our region, but in the southern tier, many of them are not able to. It impacts their, their family lives, their ability to find. I just wanted to bring it up again, and, and approach the annual conference, and who will be, will that be you or should Joe?
Mr. Cassidy.
Mr. Cassidy will, will be placing our vote on, on certain issues, and just wondering if the board feels like they could support something like that, or if it's something that they would maybe like to think about.
So Ms. Casey will be giving us the information from NISBA when it comes out, so a reminder and a heads up to you, and as of the photo, we will get the, the list of initiatives that NISBA recommends, that they support, supporting on behalf of the districts. So districts get the opportunity to propose an initiative that NISBA will then lobby for if all of the component districts vote for it. So the request from the southern tiered districts to, from the superintendents is that we consider voting in favor of this particular initiative when it comes up on the ballot.
And my recollection from last year is that that's, there's a long list of, of things that are submitted from all around.
Very long list.
And some that NISBA has already, it, it has indicated that they are in support of or are not in.
Yes, they will endorse or not endorse, and then at the end of the meeting that you'll attend, there will be an opportunity for districts to lobby for the initiatives that have not been supported, the propositions that have not been supported. So this may turn up on a list that NISBA is supporting, this may turn up on a list that NISBA is not supporting, and we can choose to go along either way.
Right.
And I think, and just, this is one of those things where just because we support it does not mean, A, that it will make it through and the state will make it a viable option, and B, it doesn't mean we have to offer it. It just means we're supporting the, the idea of allowing daycares to be run through school districts. So it doesn't mean we're going to have it or that we have to have it. It just means that we're hoping to make it possible for those that need it.
And I think that it was right after our last meeting, Mr. Russ sent out a Buffalo News article that was actually talking about the situation in Pine Valley, is it? Am I right?
Yeah.
It was down in Pine Valley, and that's where it is coming from. So that's in our emails, in case you didn't get a chance to read it. For me, it explained it, I thought, pretty well, and it felt like something that I don't see us have, ever having necessarily the need to implement it, but I would be in favor of supporting something like that for the sake of districts who do.
And I believe NISBA, in their, they sent out their weekly clips or daily clips, they had several articles about it as well.
Yeah, it said that they're, it's on their radar.
Yeah.
So there's currently a prohibition against school districts doing this?
More about creating the mechanism to do it, am I correct?
Yeah, exactly. So, so when, three more, it's from Pine Valley, she worked with the state to be able to offer it through her district. She actually had a child herself, and in her own search for, for daycare, found it nearly impossible. And so, you know, from her perspective and her ability to search and have the means to look for something, she said it was, I guess it kind of opened her eyes to an issue that was always there. And so she went through the process to, to get it approved through the state. So the idea is, is that, Dan, this would come through and would allow it to happen in a, in a more, I guess, just the process would be easier to, to.
So this is a district-run program?
Exactly, yes.
Employees are employees of the school district, and somehow the district charges for this service?
Yes.
We've had daycare in our school district in the past. The Easter Or Community Nursery began with rental space in our school district, and the parents who, who wanted to find daycare could find it in our school buildings at that time. Now, of course, they moved away, and now they're located at Fisher Price. But it's, it's not unusual, and it's not prohibited for districts to contract with an organization like the Easter Or Community Nursery, which is a very respected daycare and this, to provide such a service in rented space. But what you're talking about is a different thing with the district employing the individuals, and it becomes a whole other ball of wax with regard to retirement systems and, and all the other issues that pop up with district employees.
I think the issue is that if there is no one to contract with, what do you do?
Yeah, oh, I, I understand completely. I, it's, I would be in favor of it as long as they define it, so that we understand what, what we're getting into.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I was going to say. Obviously, we need to see what the language is and how it's laid out, because right now it's just a general concept, so we need to see what they're actually proposing before we can decide whether or not we can.
If your friends there in the southern tier are asking, I don't hear the board objecting to the concept. More detail.
Very good.
I have no objection to southern tier districts.
Finding a means of daycare for their.
Sure. And then just the other thing, I just want to let the board know that we're, we're in the process of joining the Sandy Hook Promise Say Something Anonymous reporting on, so we'll have some more information for you at the near future. We've been working with representative and, and working out the details. So I just wanted to let you know, any other comments, Mark, that'll be coming up?
No, there'll be a lot more information, but basically, it's, it's a large 24/7, both threat and also mental health hotline that's staffed by mental health professionals. They run a quality organization. We vetted them a million ways from Sunday. A lot have 24/7 call centers for threats. The unique part about this one is that everyone who's on the other end of the phone is a trained mental health counselor as well. So it both can, it can address a wide variety of, of school safety issues and student safety issues. So there'll be some information rolling out, both to the board, the community, the parents. There is a training for the kids on how to access the phone number app, web, you know, how to report things, but just so you're aware, that, that's going to be another layer of safety we put in, creating a 24/7, 365-staffed hotline for any, anything considered a safety issue, and that'll be coming up, and you'll hear more about it.
Is there any legislation to come? Item nine, board presidents and board member comments. I would just like to remind the board to stick around. We're going to talk about scheduling an executive session to work on the superintendent's evaluation. Mr. Cassidy?
I have nothing.
We attended, Weller and I, somebody else attended? No, just, we attended the sustainability, sustainable agriculture course textbook committee meeting, and we reviewed that textbook. Yeah, that's all I, that's all I have going, so you want to add to that one?
Okay, it's for the new sustainability course. The textbook is called The Omnivore's Dilemma by Michael Pullman, and it's on the agenda for tonight. It was a bestseller that won a James Beard Award for literary reading, and if you're familiar with his, he's an adult book, so this is a children's version of it. So it's an adapts, adaptation of his food chain, food chain exploration, which encourages kids to consider personal and global implications of their food choices. Interestingly enough, when we asked Mr. Shelley and Mr. Hanson how many kids are in this class, 45 kids wanted to take this class. They only could take 28, but 45 wanted to, to join. And as we heard that these two teachers attended a one-day, I think it was one-day session at Cornell University, one of their wishes is to take these group of kids to Cornell to see what they were shown the day that they did their workshop. They said it was absolutely amazing, and the kids would love it. So I thought that was really, really interesting, that it'd be a great field trip for them. The other, were you, were you done?
No, that's it.
The other thing, I attended with seven or eight or nine administrators, the Western New York Erie County Association of School Boards Law Conference. So if anyone wants any of the notes or anything with that, just let me know, and I can forward them to you. There was a ton of administrators that were there as well with me. Well, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Weller.
Ms. Weller?
Yes.
Just curious, what, is it juniors and seniors for sustainability, is that correct?
The seniors.
Seniors. So I'm curious, the selection of a child or the kids instead of the adult version of The Omnivore? I just wondered if you had a discussion. Yeah, I know, I know the book. That's why I was curious what the.
Is it a young adult or kids' version?
It's a young adult.
It's a young adult.
Young adult.
I think it came down to the, the.
Pretty, pretty big book.
Yeah.
Right.
Compressing it so that they could ask for books later on.
I was just curious what discussion came up.
Thank you.
It's an older book. It was written in 2015, but he said it was, both of them, the gentleman said that it's, everything that's in the book applies to today.
Right.
And it takes you through like a whole meal plan, deciding what your choices, when you're going to do a whole day meal. So that's why they said it still pertains. And they said it's a shorter book, and it's one that they're going to sign like a chapter a week, and this is just one of four books that they'll be reading, of course, this year.
Great, thank you.
But yes, they were going to open up to juniors and seniors. They had so many people, they just had to make it to seniors. But the hope is, anyone who still wanted to be in the class, they can help out on the farm, so they can still be doing some things.
Because there will be a sustainability club, right?
Yeah.
So there will be a sustainability club, and they're hoping so any of those, like freshmen through juniors and seniors, they could all join the sustainability club.
Forty-five students is about a third of the class.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Roberts, you want to give us like a quick update on that? How's it going?
The chicken feeder arrived today, so that was a big event in the main office that we've never been able to see now. If you drive by off of Suite, you'll see that the shed has arrived as well. This is a beautiful shed that we will be able to paint and highlight our colors on. Away on the side of it, we'll be able to put the sustainable agriculture emblem that the gentleman revealed to you, or I think I did when I presented to you in the springtime. You'll also be able to see the four corners of the fence are marked for installation in the very near future. So it's like everything with the start of school year, it's, it's even fast, and, and yeah, the interest is, we're, we're not surprised, but, but it gave us great confidence and made a good decision, and thank you for supporting the program. I think it's, it's, it's something that I think we continue to, to, to have stories told from the experience that the kids have, and it'll be very visible on our front lawn.
Yeah. How many chickens?
I, I don't know how many chickens I can, but there's.
More chickens than have previously been advised.
I could thank the foundation, too, who provided a lot of the, the money to purchase the shed, very generous.
Thank you. Mr. Blowers?
I do, yes, thank you. The audit committee met on July 24th. Those in attendance were Mr. Brunson, Mr. Cadet, Mr. Russ, Ms. George, and three representatives from our audit firm, BWB. Majority of the discussion centered around the 2223 audit requirements, audit process and audit responsibilities. Regarding the responsibilities, the auditors identified their responsibilities in the area of compliance with generally accepted accounting standards, compliance with government auditing standards, uniform guidance, fraud risk, materiality, audit strategy. And then additional audit responsibilities include identifying influencing valuations of the audit. Those are environmental factors such as COVID-19, monitoring the trends in the current economic climate, managerial expertise of the management, final managerial expertise of the audit committee members, receivable revenue recognition, fund balance, reserves and reserve levels, impact of inflation on school finances. So you can see it was very big reading. Additionally, the discussion included management responsibilities in the audit process as well as the audit committee's responsible in the audit process. There was also a conversation about audit strategy and the audit committee's evaluation of risk. The audit committee will review the draft of the 2223 audit findings at the next meeting in September or early October. The final draft of the audit will be presented to the entire board in October. Then finally, the audit committee members have reviewed the 2223 risk assessment reports submitted by the district's internal auditor. The report contains information that I believe will be all valuable to the Board of Education as we move forward, like technology claims and our food service initiatives. The report will be submitted for acceptance at our September meeting. And that's all I have. Mr. Brunson, you want to add anything?
Oh, thank you. Just thank you to all of the people who are involved here, our auditors. And it's, I think Mr. Finiziani has been with us for quite a few years now and he works behind the scenes, but I'm very appreciative of his work. And the volunteers who, the community volunteers, Mr. Cadet and Mr., yes, AJ, they provide a perspective that, from the community's point of view, so it's good of them to, and all the people, when you think about it, who volunteer for committee work within the school district, it's, they're being good citizens by default.
Anything else? Mr. Brunson, anything else for you tonight?
Nothing.
On July 25th, I attended the 2023 Summer Law Conference Series and that was day two and it dealt with collective bargaining, looking back, thinking ahead, a year review of the important cases that have come out and other rulings. I also have July 24th, which was day one, I have that on tape and I'm going to be watching that. That's school safety, evolving challenges in the road ahead, a year in review, the new laws and regulations, and then executive session, the simple and the not so easy. So I do have the PowerPoints for all of those, so I have all that information. And I'm, as I said, I have to do day two because it's like on tape. So I'll have that done probably before our next meeting. And then I'm happy to share if anyone has any interest in any of these, like PowerPoints or whatever, I can, I can get those to you, so.
Is the year in review, Jay Verona?
Yeah.
Yeah, I said, was it, was it Jay on yours as well? I would love to get either a printed copy of his remarks or a recorded version if you could.
Yeah, I can give you the PowerPoints and the outline, but I can't give you the, because the taped one goes specifically to me.
Gotcha.
I don't have a taped one, but I can give you the same thing.
Well, he usually hands out a pretty thick book.
They don't, they don't.
They don't do that anymore?
No.
Yeah, that was really good because he, I mean, he couldn't cover half of what was in the handout that he gave out, but the handout was a really good reference.
I have the outline. It's just, they don't hand it out. I have it, like I can send it to you.
Thank you, yeah.
Maybe Mrs. Kennedy's on the year in review to everyone and then, if anyone needs it printed, please reach out to Mrs. Casey and see if it's your copy. Thank you. Moving on to administrative comments. Hello, thank you all for being here.
Yeah, I can start. Tomorrow, we are going to be welcoming about 80 pre-K students to Parkdale to have a wonderful meet and greet with their teachers. I'm sure they'll be excited. We sure are. We'll have a bus there to greet them and it's going to be a wonderful event. On Thursday, Parkdale's welcoming all their new families. We have about 20 new families scheduled to come into Parkdale and so we're offering a new families orientation this Thursday. And followed by next week, we have our supply drop off and open house on the sixth. Lots going on at Parkdale.
Fifth.
Oh, yes, the fifth. I also want to say thank you to the custodial staff. As Cindy mentioned, there's been a lot of activity this summer at Parkdale. They've been working extremely hard to get everything back and ready to go for opening. So I just want to give them a great big shout out. They've been doing a great job pulling in a lot of hours and working very hard. So thank you to them.
Thank you for sharing. Mr. Brown?
Sure, I'll follow what Mrs. Pantoa said and just, we have our new student orientation next week as well, where I believe we're at 17, I think, new students are new to the district. And then we will also have our open house and supply drop off on September 6th, where the school will be open, all the teachers will be here September 5th, actually the same thing. And these two trucks will be in the parking lot, so that should be fun. And I was just going to thank not only the custodial staff, because again, they've been shorthanded and the building looks amazing. If you look at the floors, you feel like you're going to slip on ice, like I almost don't want to walk on them because they look so good, but they've done an incredible job. And also a shout out to two incredible people, Mr. Librock and Mrs. Petrinic. Mr. Librock took on all of the student schedules this year for the first time ever and it was a daunting task and he spent hours and hours and hours and I'm just so impressed with the efforts that he did. And as you all know, Mrs. Christie, our building secretary, was promoted to the, our district coordinator, I believe is her title, in the tech office. So Mrs. Petrinic has been running the main office by herself all summer and she's just done an absolutely incredible job. And we are in the process of hiring a replacement for her because later in this board meeting, she will be promoted to the head secretary. So we're very excited about that, but I just can't thank her enough for all the effort that she's done this summer.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Anyone else this evening?
I can continue on a similar theme, but the update from the high school is just our orientation, which is for incoming freshmen and new students, is all day Thursday. During COVID, we changed what our orientation looked like or looks like to now having small groups of students, about 20 students at a time, and they come in and they meet with student leaders, with club advisors, with our counseling center staff. And we have more of an hour-long, more intimate experience with those students and we're feeling that they are leaving that more confident than when we did the group experience in the past. So we have a long but exciting day on Thursday with all of those students. And there's been a lot of balls bouncing around the high school.
I was going to hop in and say nothing's going on.
So I'll segue over to Mr. Lombardo. He's had some excitement last couple days.
Fall season's up and going with GB modified, or GB varsity sports. Modified starts Monday, football which can start Thursday. Seems to be fairly smooth off the ground. The girls golf team is up and running after we put that together last minute. They're pretty much using Ironwood as their home course. When we kind of called around, they'll have a match or two at EACC, where we'll piggyback right out of the boys. They have their first practice. They'll open up with their first ever match next Thursday at Woolley's in Trans Valley Country Bowl.
Any updates?
Mr. Lombardo, I saw that we have some pretty cool coaches for that new program.
They've been, they're kind of new to the East Aurora area. They haven't been around too much, so hopefully we can get them acquainted with everything that goes on.
They'll settle in, right?
Yeah, they'll settle right in.
Thank you. Anyone, yes?
I don't know if they're finished.
I don't know either. Anyone else this evening? Thank you all.
Just a quick question that's in general, do we notice an increase in enrollment of new students? I noticed several principals mentioned new students, but is that the normal number we get or is it significantly larger or smaller?
About the same.
How normal?
For us.
Should I say it's the same?
And, Mr. Roberts, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
During COVID, our numbers were lower, but now we're approaching about 20. So it's, it's getting back to what would be the pre-COVID numbers.
Okay, but it's not extraordinary. Yeah, thank you. And Mr. Russ, from your point of view, we're in all respects ready to open school for the first day for students?
Yeah, there's some, you know, over the next few days, tying up some loose ends and just getting some final people in place, but pretty much things are ready to roll. You know, we're never.
Well, I know you have one or two more appointments to make, but aside from that, transportation, facilities, staffing, all looks good. Thank you.
Any video updates? Moving on to community comments, this is the time where we ask community members to provide us with their feedback. Before we begin, I want to make sure everyone received emails from Dr. Loria and from Mrs. Nettle.
Yes.
And I know that Mrs. Nettle, you have requested to speak.
I did. Thank you so much for letting me speak today.
Just a quick heads up, we generally give folks three minutes.
Okay, absolutely, yeah. As made aware to you in the letter submitted by myself and Dr. Loria, East Aurora's own district medical director, my husband and I come to you for help. Our daughter is severely medically complex and is diagnosed with an extremely rare, unique genetic anomaly. Her unfortunate health circumstances forced us to adapt our lives in ways we never imagined. Through a medically necessary home-based educational platform, we have built a safe, appropriate environment that has proven to help her progress educationally, something we, as well as her medical team, weren't sure would ever be possible. The related services provided by East Aurora have played a substantial role in this progress, with the most influential being that of her special education provider. This provider, who is employed through Erie Tuboces, was assigned to our daughter's teacher at the beginning of the 2021 school year. Over the last two years, she has been able to build an exceptional relationship with our daughter through developed instincts and a bond that is unmatched. This has brought out progress that we never thought possible. Through breaks in services as well as any major transition, our daughter completely shuts down and exudes worrisome regression. Due to actions by the school, a complete stranger is now assigned to replace our established teacher for the upcoming school year. This change has no regard for our daughter for her educational and social emotional needs. We have been told repeatedly by your staff that we have no say in this matter and have been advised to accept this harm that this will inflict on our daughter's development. Ripping this established person from our daughter's world will inevitably cause regression so great during these critical years, the progress she had made will never be regained. We are filled with heartbreak and dread for our daughter's future with the implement of this provider change. Your mission statement states, "The East Aurora School District will provide environments, experiences, materials, and professional talents to help each student prepare to live in society as a contributing, self-fulfilling, and caring citizen. The school will endeavor to develop in each student a lifelong desire for knowledge and the skills to acquire it. The school will promote learning in the context of common sense, hope for a better future, and a deep respect for humanity." As confirmed by Dr. Loria and all of our current providers, this transition threatens our child's chance of ever gaining the skills necessary to someday function as an independent adult. Dr. Loria also stated in our recent CSE meeting that it is common sense to maintain the current provider. This statement is confirmed in the July 26-23 CSE meeting notes. I must ask, does your mission statement truly apply to each student or just some of them? If you truly believe in your educational mission and dedication to each student, we ask for you to please find a solution to maintain the established provider as our daughter's special education teacher. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Nettle, for being here tonight. The board has been following along and has read your letters and I'm going to ask you to speak with the superintendent maybe one more time to see what channels are available to you for advocating for yourselves. Unfortunately, this is a very complex scenario and as you've heard some of what goes on here, that the school districts are complicated places and the needs of the individual child are certainly paramount and we also have to follow the obligations that are before us. So I'm going to refer you to the superintendent one more time to see if there aren't other avenues for you to pursue for advocacy. But thank you both for sharing your stories with us and thank you for being here tonight. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the board this evening? Thank you for being here. We're moving on to item 12, reports and discussion items. We are at a parade of 2023, 2024 board polls. We've been working on this for a while and I have my notes in my last. I think we had some pretty clear goals and I'd like to open it up to the floor to see if anyone has anything top of mind or would you like me to start it up?
Yep. Based on the summary of the self-evaluation that you sent out before the last, next year's goals, it seems like there were some things that rose to the top. One was certainly creating an onboarding for new board members is, seemed to be one that was mentioned more than, more than just a couple places. Another one was the engagement slash communications and finding new ways and new opportunities to reach out and engage the community. I think that, I mean, there were some more, I think some more detailed examples of that in there, but on a general, those seem to be two things that stood out for me as pretty clear results.
Thank you. Other thoughts? I think those were too high on the list.
Have our usual goals of, you know, making sure we have a balanced budget and.
I think we also talked about somehow trying to improve the communication, whether it be through some type of handout at the door.
Yeah, and that, I was kind of wrapping that into the engagement slash communication.
Okay, yeah, perfect.
Yeah, and because I, I know we heard about that, that last year's convention, I still think it's fantastic idea.
Other thoughts or feedback? Do we think that two, two broad goals, one for an onboarding plan for new board members, which I think is fantastic. And we've talked, we did a lot of work on reviewing our committee assignments. I think that's part of it. Part of deciding how to onboard folks is also to decide how we describe what the role is of a board member.
And it was, it was interesting just going along with the committee, how we changed sort of the committee. We had that, the curriculum, and I was the, I was going to go to it, but I'm the alternate and I'm like, okay, we're just going to report. So Maria and Terry are completely capable, so it totally changed my way of thinking because I'm like, okay, this is, this is what we said we're going to do. It's a new way of approaching it, so.
One thing I will say about that though is if someone is not going to attend a meeting, to let the alternate know.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Just so I think we. We're used to all going and it's new for all of us, so if you're not going to make one for whatever reason, just make sure you let the alternate know.
Right.
But please bring the feedback back to the board.
Exactly.
The idea here is not to exclude board members from participating in things, but the idea is to streamline what we do so that other community members don't think it is a ridiculous job they could never take on. All right, thank you. So onboarding plan and community engagement and communication review and update. Maybe I'll ask the vice president or our committee to help draft something more formal that we could put in an agenda for final review on the other. Comfortable? Listen specifically what that was? What does this specifically look like?
Well, I, I think that the mentioning of the need for educational experience for new board members, an onboarding plan, I think should be also a reminder to all of us that we have a responsibility for, for continuing our education, no matter how many years you've been on the Board of Education. And for me, it's a challenge now because I can't get to some of the, I always went to the law conferences. I never missed a law conference, two a year for 10 years or however many years, but the, but these two I missed. And, and so it's a challenge for me to be thinking of alternative ways of, of continuing my growth as a board member in a, in a way that works now for my new lifestyle. So the, so I think we all should have a goal in mind. And we're, tomorrow morning, we're doing a training regarding board docs. You know, for, for the longest time, I thought, oh, what was wrong with having a printed agenda, you know, and a, and a bunch of papers piled up in my office at home that I could never find when I needed them. So the, the, this, this new system is going to, I think, help us all to keep better track of things like contracts and other documents. like contracts and other documents that we regularly need to be able to assess. So thank you to Beth for helping us to do this, and those of us who have been reluctant to change. So I think there's an element, we don't need it as a separate goal, but I think there's an element in this goal of onboarding new board members that says to all of us that let's look and see what each of us can do to be better able to understand the complex educational system we're all part of and how we can best serve that.
Onboarding plus training and development.
Yeah.
Plus, Mr. Brunson, just as a heads up, the NISBA law conference are now virtual, so you can do those.
I did notice that. Yeah, I did notice that.
So just going forward for next year, they're talking about continuing to do a two-day, half-day seminars virtual, so.
Other thoughts or feedback? All right, moving on. We are at consensus, item 13, consensus items. Is there anyone who wishes to withdraw a consensus item from the agenda?
I don't wish to withdraw, I just think that there may be a typo on the name, because 2023, but that was October 13, 2023, but that hasn't happened yet, maybe in 2022.
Yep.
What number are we looking at?
Yes, yes, letter E. That is a note to the board, so I think we're all good there.
Yeah.
Thank you. The highlights are notes to the board, not the...
Okay.
But thank you.
Twenty, must be, yeah, must have been earlier, it must be twenty.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the careful review, that's very much appreciated. Is there anyone else, anyone who wishes to withdraw a consensus item?
Move.
Moved by Mr. Brown. Second? Second by Mrs. Oweiler. Oh, those in favor. Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero. Thank you. Item 14, item required board action. Item A, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education re-adopt the East Aurora Union Free School District. Policy manual is pitched on Friday. By Mrs. Daniel. Second by Mr. Cassidy. Discussion, Mr. Eric.
We just have some handouts coming out. You have a hard copy of the table of contents, which is kind of a quick, at a glance. Number one shows the amount of work that your policy committee did, but number two, do we have a policy on that? Two things, you now have just a two-page front and back cheat sheet on what policies we have. Also, everything is now current in board docs. Other than the introduction, which has been sent to you in your agenda, that will be current by the end of the week, as well as the agenda, and it's all searchable. So that just kind of gives you at your fingertips glance of what policies we have, but board docs has everything. I also sent in the latest, I believe it was the newspaper, there was a little article on both policy and a little policy quiz, so I just sent that out. That's just for your own edification. But the most important thing, that table of contents I gave you, that I would kind of keep somewhere in your binder or folder of board stuff, just because it's a very handy thing. The admin also have it to keep under their blotters, so it takes the phone book-sized manual and puts it down to two pages, just so you at least have a starting spot. And then the goal from here is, once we get to October, the policy committee is going to start meeting, and again, slowly go through it all with a little more refined-tooth comb, and that, we have a little more time. We tried to rush through, and we did, the whole manual in one year. We're now going to slow down and put extra emphasis on some of those where might need a little more nuance, and at the same time, any new policies, you know, they'll have their own meetings as well. So the work, the heavy lift is done, we've turned the corner, we basically have a brand-new manual, and now it's the ongoing work of maintenance that we'll do, which is just as important, just as tedious, but we're at a firm foundation doing it.
Thank you, Mr. Manbretti, for all of your work, and thank you to the committee.
Yes, I appreciate the fact that you're going to do a list of those things that require annual attention.
Yes.
That is something that we tried to do years ago, and it just slips through the cracks. But when there's a policy, that in the policy it says this will be reviewed annually, or a report will be created annually, the, of course, the search helps, because you can just put the word annual in, and it pops out all those ones that have that requirement in it, but it's a good thing to have that list, so.
Yeah, we'll have a little cheat sheet on that, and then the only other thing that isn't current in board docs yet is, we're going to have a list of title holders for every title that's in policy, who's currently holding that, and that will be in the reduction section as well, so I just haven't had a minute to do that.
Used to be an organizational chart.
That's, that's coming to...
It's coming to.
That's no longer in policy. If reference, the policy says we'll have one that will be kept at the superintendent's office, and where you...
Oh, yeah.
So we're getting there. We're getting there. Yes.
I would just like to thank the board for, like, supporting the new administrative structure, because it's allowed us to free up Mr. Manbretti to take this on, it's an enormous amount of work. And like I said, on the committee, board members who are on the committee did absolutely a fantastic job of evaluating each and every one of these policies, which were very tedious. I tried to listen more and speak less, which isn't always easy for me, because this is the work of the board. This is every year. And so it is a monumental task, and it puts us in a great place in terms of the guidance for the district, and that is your role in, it's a ton of work, it's complicated, it's a lot of difficult language, lots of difficult laws and regulations to sort through, so completion of this is a really, really important piece in terms of providing direction for the district. And now, like as Mark was saying, it's something that we can manage, right? You're going to have to continue to do it, but it, and it will be updated and changed because the laws are always changing, we have new policies, we have a few things that have popped up recently, we'll probably be talking to you about that are coming up for consideration, and, but I'd like to thank the board for supporting it and allowing us to get this done, because it's really important work. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more thing, please, Mr. Russ. The previous policy manual, a number of policies said right in the policy, administrative regulations will be developed to implement this policy. And we had these, you know, in those days, a big blue policy book, and then two or three white books of regulations, forms, procedural documents. Can we assume that those old administrative regulations are now no longer in force?
Yes.
Because there've been occasions where individual community members have dived into those regulation books and said, well, are you doing this? It's your regulation.
So all the, there's two things, there were the two regulation manuals, there was also a forms manual or two. We, and that was actually part of our audit, Bob, the auditor from the state, came and checked. We do have, way back pre-pandemic, when we very first started this, the board suspended all the regulations and all the forms. So now, as we go back through this fine-tooth comb for things that require that, but as of now, the district has no regulations, we have everything that's required, but regulations in that sense of the word, or forms in that sense of the word, and that's going to be part of this now, we slowly go through it again. We had to lay the foundation.
I don't think, in reading those policies as you created them, I don't think as many said anything like that in them.
No, only the ones, only the ones that require it.
Yeah.
And we have to go back and do those now.
Because the white books had, so if the policy was 2170, the regulation would be 2170R, and if there was a form that you filled out, like complaining about an instructional material, that would be 2170F, you know, and it all made sense, but it was all outdated and old, and frankly, not being used, but would trip us up if we ever felt...
Use the wrong shoe to pay.
Yeah, well, it's a good point.
Yeah, so as we go through it now, so currently, none of that exists. We cleared all this with policy services, we cleared all this with our lawyers, this is the right way to do it. Now, as the board goes back through section by section, we're going to highlight those things and create what we need, but also give us the flexibility where things change.
It'll be much more slender.
That's the plan. I'd like myself to be much more slender, too, but that's a different plan.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero. Item B, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the adoption of the 2023, 2024 Code of Conduct, as detailed in your agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Brunson. Second. Second by Mrs. Daniel. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero.
Thank you to Mr. Brown for leading that effort.
Yes. Item C, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the adoption of the 2023, 2024 District-Wide Safety Plan, as detailed in your... That motion. So moved by Mrs. Oweiler. Second by Mrs. Daniel. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero. Item D, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the memorandum of agreement with, between the school district and the faculty association, as detailed in your attachment.
So moved.
By Mr. Blowers. Second by Mr. Cassidy. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero. Item E, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the memorandum of agreement between the school district and the Civil Service Personnel Association, as detailed in your attachment. They have a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Blowers. Second. Second by Mrs. Oweiler. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero. Item F, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education accept the Community Safety Training Grant awarded by the educational foundation, as detailed in your attachment. They have a motion? So moved. Moved by Mrs. Oweiler. Second. Second by Mr. Cassidy. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero. Item G, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education set the 2023, 2024 school tax rates, as detailed in your agenda and attachments. They have a motion? So moved. Moved by Mrs. Daniel. Second? Second. Second by Mr. Cassidy. Discussion.
Well, this is a slight adjustment from the rates that we approved, based on an error that was discovered.
Thank you very much for the clarification. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero. Item H, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the $100,000 capital outlay contract between the district and Young and Wright Architects. They have a motion? So moved. Moved by Mrs. Oweiler. Second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Daniel. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven...
I'm sorry, this has been reviewed by your attorneys, it's counter, okay, just confirming. Thank you, sorry. Get it in in time.
No, no, apologies, sorry, I'll give more pause. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero. Item I, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the resolution confirming the seeker declaration for the capital project, began in 2022. They have a motion? So moved. Moved by Mrs. Oweiler. Second by Mr. Cassidy. Discussion. This was prepared by our attorneys. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero. Item J, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing certain necessary and non-material modifications to the district's voter-approved capital improvement project. Moved by Mr. Brunson. Second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Oweiler. Discussion.
Again, this was reviewed by our attorneys, prepared. Thank you.
Reviewed by attorneys, and related to the drainage issue that we learned about.
Yes, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero. Item 15, or any other business you want to report to the board.
Oh, no, I was going to, something I wanted to mention for future reference.
Sure.
At some point, we'll be getting an update on transportation, electric buses, and if this first student had any plans for that, I don't, it's nothing now, next week, or whatever, but at some point, I don't know, we need a transportation committee, I don't know what we need, but we just get another year closer, that's all.
Right.
I wonder if they have autonomous driving school buses.
Thank you to Ms. Casey for listing our next regularly scheduled board meetings. You see the upcoming workshops? Time to register for the NISBA conference?
How many of you are going?
I am.
I am.
I have said yes, but I...
Yeah, there was three that was holding out on us, so.
Oh, so everyone's going?
Almost everybody.
I think we all are.
I know.
Oh. Everyone but Mr. Brunson?
There's six.
So I come up with a...
Thank you so much.
Something.
And likely, it is right here in Buffalo, so much easier this time around. Anything else to come before the board this evening? Remember that you cannot leave until we get to the executive session, but may have a motion here. So moved. Moved by Mrs. Daniel. Second by Mrs. Cassidy. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions carried seven zero. Thank you, meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much. Happy end of summer. Rest wishes.
Bye.
Okay.